Thank you very much for joining us today, Monday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-three at four P M. The Albany City Council Work Session. I'll call the meeting to order. Gabe, would you please roll call, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
Councillors Montague.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
McGee.
Right.
Yeah.
Newton.
Present.
And Kobsensky.
Here.
Five members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And Council McGee is excused from today's meeting. Is there any business from the public?
I'm here. I'm on virtual.
Okay, well, thank you.
All members present.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any business from the public, Gabe? Nobody signed up? Is anybody in the audience like to have time with the council? Please, three minutes. Hi Janet.
Could you possibly speak close to the mic?
Well, thank you very much. Does anyone else in council like to speak, address the council? Well, thank you very much. Next on the presentation by the Cumberland Community Events Center. Emma Eaton. So ten to fifteen minute presentation.
Good evening. Is it afternoon? Thank you for having us back. It's a long time since we've seen you, actually since two thousand and twenty. As we all know, a lot's happened since then. New faces. I'm glad to see you. Thank you. I'd like to, we'd like to share the.
For a second, could please go to the door and get your background? Sorry about that. Thank you.
We have a short video that we'd like to share because it'll catch you up to what's happened. Wish things had happened this, really. Wait, by the way, that was South Albany High School and Calipul School Alcappello Group. I'd like to talk about organizational development first. It is vital that the organization and the building are with the same care and attention to detail. We want to connect with, support the local community. Our focus for immediate impact is to create increased safety in the surrounding neighborhood. We are working to strong organization. Build a comprehensive business plan and develop program aligned with our mission. We are in the discovery stage of a program development. We are investing in renting the space to civic, art, cultural, and religious groups. We have meeting and volunteering with other local nonprofits. This keeps, I apologize.
Matt, can we replace the microphone?
Already. So I don't want to yell at you, but at the same point. We have been meeting and volunteering with other local nonprofits to learn more about them and their unmet needs. These nonprofits consistently ask if we could provide an affordable space to meet and accommodate their programs. We have met with the following nonprofits. Albany Altrusa, FACT, also known as Families and Community Together. Waverly Elementary School Admin. Love Inc. of Lynn County. Kiwanis Rotary Club of Albany. Habitat for Humanity. The sooner we can use the building, the sooner we can make these organizations, excuse me, help these organizations meet their needs.
Okay, so we changed our strategy a little bit. Our long-term goal is still to develop this property with a community event center. That hasn't changed. But now we have a short-term objective, and that is to get the building occupiable as soon as possible as we've learned more about the needs of these local nonprofits. To achieve the goal, we need the ownership of the three lots currently leased from the city. If you look at the site plan, the upper-left plot we purchased from the city about three years ago. That's where the building sits today. We are leasing the other three lots surrounding it as part of our overall development plan to add parking and an addition on the south side. Having ownership will increase our credibility when pursuing donations and grants and allow us to focus on making space available to nonprofits as quickly as possible. The current lease option contract expires December one. As a part of that agreement with the consent of both parties, that agreement can be renewed for subsequent twelve-month terms up to three renewal periods. This is our request. We'd like you to help us ensure ownership of the three leased lots as quickly as possible. Now, there's a range of alternatives. This really triggered in part, though, by the fact that this renewal is coming up December one. Ideally, we can get the property purchased as quickly as possible if you reduce the price. Someone suggested maybe we offer a nominal price of one dollar per lot. That didn't seem to have much substance, but I thought, well, if we offered thirty-six dollars per lot, that is equivalent of another thirty-six months lease for the lots. This would be the ideal. An alternative would be to revise the lease option contract, reducing the purchase price, which is currently set at two hundred and seven thousand dollars. And rather than subsequent leases for a year at a time, have one three-year renewal period. At a minimum, we'd like to revise the lease option contract to have one three-year renewal period rather than having to come back each year to request a new renewal. So we're asking city council to help support us in reaching our goal as quickly as possible by ensuring that we can purchase these three lots as quickly as possible.
And thank you for having us here today.
Counsel, any questions? Are you done? I'm sorry. Are you done?
That is.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel Novak?
So in order to help them, would we make a motion to change the lease or would we need to discuss this first?
We have to, we can't have any decisions today, but we could say we got staff to bring back information for us.
Okay, well, then I'd like staff to bring back information so we can help them move it along.
So can you give us more specific, with counsel, what are you thinking about this as well? Anything?
We'd also like to invite you for tours or to come and see the building.
I'd like to have staff come and bring us a report on impact of revising lease option contract and the renewal period, and we can discuss it on Wednesday. I'm what she said.
Counsel, Counsel McGee?
I agree with Counsel Newton. I think that would be beneficial and helpful when coming up with a decision.
So we're going to give direction to staff, bring back some options for us to consider. And hopefully a chance to get that done by Wednesday. If not, we'll have to bring it back in the next meeting. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, really? Well, I, I, when I got, when I got elected to office, I stopped being IT, so I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's too bad.
Your, your voice carries too. Thank you, Emma. So did you hear, you know, as far as bringing back some options either next week, Wednesday or next week, next time?
It won't be Wednesday. So the agenda for Wednesday is already set. It's long. And we'll need to bring back a staff report on the impacts of not getting the full purchase price. I think will probably be the big discussion point. So we'll do that as soon as we can.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Next on tonight's agenda would be Jessica Epley from Zibley Fiber Optic. Good to see you again.
Mayor, good afternoon, council. Jessica Epley, Vice President of Regulatory and External Affairs for Zibley Fiber. I'm here to give you a brief update on our deployment of our fiber optic network. We're about halfway through our build as of today. We've been underway for just a little over seventy-five days. Our biggest roadblock at this point is some city permits. We have nine projects that are being held currently because of city permits. Many of these have been tolling for quite some time. We're also awaiting a railroad crossing permit that is proving to be a bit challenging for us to get. But we are in communications with the rail owner currently, so happy to answer any questions council has.
Counsel. Counsel Novak?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we don't have any more issues with citizens on their property having negative experiences. I'm, I'd like to know that you do have people that are being careful and taking all these things into consideration so we don't get additional complaints.
Counsel Novak, thank you so much for the opportunity. I was remiss in calling my notes forward here. I'm proud to tell you that we've had exactly one complaint through our entire construction to date. So while I believe that council's been told of concerns by multiple parties, we've had exactly one person reach out to us and that complaint has been resolved.
It's, it was more than one person just from Albany.
To them.
To, oh, to you directly. Yeah.
To, that has come in and reported to us. Yeah, we, we've received no facts, no opportunity for follow-up. We've been tracking on social media as well and providing information so that folks can go into our customer portal to put that information. They don't have to be a customer, but to put that information in for our construction team to follow up on. And so far, well, only one.
Forgive me, I don't mean to be a pain here, but I can tell you that if I have to go and create a portal or go into a portal to do anything, it's, it's stops me. I don't like doing that sort of thing. And so I don't know if there would maybe be other individuals who are like, I can't just call and talk to someone. I have to do something on the computer and because that would just, I'd, I'd stop right there.
We do have contact information that is available, but that the reason why we created this, it's a web form that you fill out. You just put your information in. It's so that we make sure it gets to the right team. You can call and, of course, talk to me, but I'm probably going to have to call three people. The folks that are paying attention to this construction and can be in market and be readily available, they're seeing this information as it comes in. So.
But only through that method.
That is the best. It is the fastest. There are other methods, but again, I've received no complaints. So I, I'm a little remiss.
So I have a question about the permitting. Is there something holding that up or?
I honestly can't tell you, Mayor. When I look at the dates and the notes in our file, it, it appears as though there's just been a gap in time. We have review dates June and August, and we haven't heard anything on most of these permits since that time. I, I can't explain if there's a staffing issue. It doesn't appear to be a concern looking for additional remittances from us. It's just, there's been no response.
So can you address that, please? Matthew?
Oh, it would probably be public works and without more specific information, I can't tell you what's going on. I will say we'll have our, some of our development engineers reach out and get information. But they should be processing as quickly as we can get the information back that we need. So we'll reach out and work on that.
Thank you. So.
Thank you.
But Counsel.
So do we know if the cities received more complaints about, because didn't we, the city get complaints about fiber lead or the?
One, I have one.
We had the lady who came in here and talked about a stake being left in her front yard.
That was the one.
Yeah. I thought, I thought there was, there were other people with her. There were other people either with her or online. I know it was more than one complaint that came to us at the city.
I, I was asking, I was threatening this at staff. Did we get, and do you know if we got any other complaints just through the?
Um, I'd have to ask the permit tax. I know that we get, they are handling a lot of calls from the contractors for Zibley in the field. And there have been some concerns. A few concerns still about traffic control and safety in the field, but I don't know that there, I don't know for sure if we've gotten more citizen complaints or more concern from staff about the contractors being safe.
Okay, thank you.
But Mayor, Counsel McGee, do you have anything? Counsel McGee?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel Smith. Thank you. Thank you very much for your report. Greatly appreciate it. We're going. Next on tonight's agenda is Storm Drainage SDC Discussion. Rob Emmons and Deb Galardi. Page three, three twenty-two in your packet.
Thank you, Mayor. And counsel. So this, we're here today, this afternoon, to talk about, continue our conversation about storm drainage system development charges. We first came to you in July and presented a draft SDC charge and asked for guidance from council and some input. And council recommended to come back for some further discussion about the methodology and some further examples of what the proposed fee would be for various developments. So Deb and I have done that, and Deb is joining us remotely. She's going to co-present with me today. So with that, let me give you a quick rundown on what we're going to talk about today. We're going to review kind of SDC basics, SDC one oh one. Just a little bit about that. Deb's going to talk about the methodology, kind of do a quick review of the methodology. And that methodology report was included in your council memo. So hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that, glance through it. Deb will, we'll go through some additional details on that. We'll go through some proposed fee examples. And then really kind of the crux, the, the, the good part of the, of our meeting today is talk about implementation options and get feedback from council as far as do we want to move forward? Do we not kind of just get some guidance, additional guidance on how to move forward and if, if we should move forward? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deb, and she's going to join us remotely and I'll, I'll do the, the slides and you can go from there. So. Deb, it's all you.
Great. Good afternoon. If you can advance the slide. So just cover the basics for, make sure everybody's on the same playing field here that we're talking about new charges on new development that are one time, generally at the time that a development permit is issued. The city has kind of staggered its implementation of the five SDCs that are allowable under Oregon statutes. In nineteen ninety-one, right after the statute was adopted, water and wastewater SDCs were put in place, parks followed in nineteen ninety-three, and transportation in nineteen ninety-seven. So stormwater is the only other system that you're not charging SDCs for that are allowable under Oregon statutes. The fees are designed to recover the costs needed to provide infrastructure for new development specifically. And we are guided by statute in terms of how we frame the methodology and how the city administers the SDC program. Okay? The methodology in determining the growth costs that we're trying to recover, there are two primary infrastructure components. The improvement fee is the charge that's based on future improvements. And that is for stormwater based on projects identified in the storm drainage master plan. Those projects that in order to be SDC eligible, the, a project on the, in the master plan has to provide that increased capacity for growth. And it has to be over and above the local development need that would be funded by, directly by the developer. For reimbursement fees, there are costs that have been incurred by the city. So again, excluding any developer contributed assets or grant-funded facilities. And we do make adjustments for capital improvements that are going to be constructed as part of that have been identified in the storm drainage master plan and that are on the improvement fee list. So no double counting of facilities on the existing facility list and then again through replacement on the project list. Okay, next slide. So this just shows you in the, the numbers, kind of the equation for the improvement SDC. So we start again with the full list, which for the storm drainage master plan is a hundred and seventy million. We subtract the portion of those project costs that are not related to providing capacity for future growth. That's estimated to be seventy-eight million. And then we also subtract the developer responsibility for providing that local service capacity. So the net then of SDC eligible costs for future improvements is fifty-seven point six million for the improvement fee. Next slide. Then we need to get that total cost down to a unit of measure that the city can then determine for each new development what its proportionate share is. So we divide the total costs over the total future impervious area that is anticipated from future growth to come up with a cost per square foot of impervious area. So you can see those numbers here, that fifty-six, fifty-seven point six million gets divided by the next increment of growth in impervious area to come up with the forty-three, roughly forty-three cents per square foot of impervious area. So then each new development would have its SDC determined based on its amount of impervious area and this unit cost per square foot. That's for the improvement fee. And then we do the same process for the reimbursement fee on the next slide. So we start with the value of the storm drains facilities, twenty-six point six million. We deduct any deficient facilities that are being replaced by the improvements. And then the, the facilities that remain serve both existing development and future growth. So we determine an equitable share of that remaining cost and the net SDC eligible cost for existing facilities is ten point three million dollars. So that's the amount that rolls forward to that unit cost calculation in the next slide. And that cost is divided by the same amount of impervious area because a portion of the, we've got the improvement costs and the reimbursement costs get spread over that total impervious area to come up with the individual fee components, but those get added together when the city determines the SDC for each development. So you can see that for the reimbursement fee, it's point zero eight per square foot of impervious area. And this just summarizes the total then, shows you the total costs for each component and then what that cost per unit is units being the square foot of impervious area. So those items summed together are about fifty-two cents per impervious area, square foot of impervious area. Okay, Rob, back to you.
So are there any, any questions? I know SDCs are confusing. Are there any questions about what Deb presented that we can help?
Counsel Smith, Counsel Novak? I'd like to know what they are currently sitting at right now.
So, so for storm drainage, we, we don't have an SDC. So zero for, right, currently. But so this slide is kind of the crux of some of the major question that, that counsel that you had last time. So and what's, what's important to note on here is it doesn't really matter what the development is. The total cost is, the incremental cost, the dollar per square foot of impervious service is the same regardless of a single-family home or, or hotel. The only difference being how much. The only difference being how much impervious surface each particular development. Constructs or has as, as part of their development. So just some examples there. First two are, are two single family homes. The first one is, is assuming a small, single family home. An impervious surface, keep in mind is not only the roof footprint, but the driveway. Or shed in the back, any surface that prevents rainwater from, from soaking into the ground. So. And then, you know, it goes all the way down to hotels, saying a big hotel comes almost two acres of parking lot and the roof structure. And at eighty thousand square feet of impervious area, it'd be forty-one thousand dollars. So it's a whole, whole range there.
This is all new development on me.
In, in redevelopment. Yeah, so, so if a company comes in or a development comes in and, and redevelops and creates additional square foot. Of impervious service. So we would be remiss if we did not compare the proposed fee to surrounding communities. So that's what the slide shows is we didn't do an exhaust, exhaustive search of surrounding communities. But pulled kind of a representative example of, of cities within the Alamo Valley. So you know, there's a whole range stating is, is, is almost double what we are in Corvallis is, is relatively low. So and there's a whole variety of reasons for, for that. You know, what.
That's a big spread.
Yeah, what their council will, will, you know, wants. How new their master plan is, kind of the newer master plans have more expensive project lists and more up to date. And they would have then result in probably a higher SDC, so.
That answered, that answered my question. I was going to ask how long these fees have been on the books in each community.
That's a good question. I don't know specifically for each community. My, my gut without doing the, the hard research would be they, they've been in place for, for quite a while. I worked for another local city close by for quite a few years. And they had a storm drainage SDC for probably twenty years.
Counselor Kapsinski.
This may be ahead of where this, this poor point of the discussion might be. But this started years ago when we were starting to work, work through this understanding that it was probably going to be happening at some point. But I guess my question would be, is there any legal ramification? If we do nothing down the road, what happens?
Yeah, so, so. We are not required to have an SDC. So this is something that's elective that council can either do or, or not do. The only real consequence is, is. How are we are going to get funding to, to construct the projects that need to be, that need to be completed as part of the master plan? Kind of continue to, to invest in our storm drainage system. Right now, it's, it. There's not much funding and the, the funding that we're trying to create is from the storm drainage utility. And, and we're trying to ramp that up to make some more money for, to have more revenue for, for projects. This would be an additional revenue source, but to answer the questions, there's no legal requirement to have a storm drainage SDC.
Counselor Montague.
On these, do you know if, if most of these cities or some of these cities are also doing the per square foot methodology? Or are there varied method, methodology?
Most of them are. Some, some may have, I think that I'll start with, with a cost per square foot. And then they take. They assume an average square foot size for a, for a single family residence and say. Okay, a single family residence is charged that average amount. And so it's not scaled. So it's like every single family home would be X dollar amount based on the average square foot impervious surface. We did not do that. We're not proposing that. We're trying to make it scalable. There are some other methodologies out there that Deb could speak much more detail than I can. But do you know of any other examples, Deb?
Well, I can say that Eugene, for example, has a three tiered structure. So any home over, I think, three thousand square feet is charged based on the measured impervious area and any. And then homes below that are charged one of like two or three different rates. So it's kind of like what you did for wastewater. It's kind of a tiered so that they aren't measuring the small homes other than to say, okay. You know, if you're small, you're going to be charged this. If you don't meet that, that three thousand square feet threshold. But I would say that still most common that, that there is a single charge. For all, you know, within a, a type of housing, like single unit housing. Multi-family is generally always measured. But as you said, Rob, Corvallis, Lebanon, Salem have not updated their stormwater SDCs in a very long time. I know that Salem is looking to do that. And so I expect that both the rate structures and the fees will change. In the next couple of years.
So. In the council memo, I put three questions that I want. Council to kind of wrestle with tonight and, and get, and get, receive some feedback. So before we get there, let me just state the questions real quick and then, and then we can go from there. But really the first question that kind of sets, you know, the course of action really is, is does council. Support moving forward to a public hearing to consider an SDC? And, and that's different than the question of would you vote yes or no? That's, that's a different question which can be considered at, at the public hearing. But at least is there support to kind of move forward to a public hearing to receive public testimony and.
I'd love to move forward with that.
So it sounds like the council would like to move forward with that.
Okay, great.
Counselor McGee, you support that? Counselor McGee, you support that?
I do.
Thank you. Yes, it is.
All right. So the, the second question is at what level should we move forward with? So.
Well, there are any options? Okay, there we go.
Yeah, so the options are to, to move forward with the, with the fee that's recommended in the methodology. And that, that's the fee that we reviewed tonight. That's the fee that really receives the funding that allows us to build growths portion of the projects in the master plan. And that's the, you know, the, the, the adage that growth pays for itself. That's, that's what that fee would do. The other option would be to implement a reduced SDC charge. And with, if that's something that council wants to explore, wants to think about, then there's some, some follow-up questions that we would need to wrestle with. Namely, the only real practical way to reduce the SDC charge is. Is to remove projects that are funded. So it's like, okay, you know, if we recommend, if council wants to recommend a, a reduced fee. Then we would need to come back and say, okay, here are the projects that we, staff recommends we not build. That make the most sense not to build. And then wrestle with, how do we fund those projects? Or, or, or do we just not build them? And then that, what's the consequence of that? So, you know, if they're. My, my, having gone through the master planning process with the storm drainage system. Those projects really do need to be built. That's why they're there. So if they're, so to not build them in the long term really isn't a viable option. So they would just have to be funded from another source. And, and this other sources, you know, the low hanging fruit, the other sources, the storm drainage utility.
Counselor Kapsinski.
Okay, I'm, I guess I'm being a little obtuse. I asked you, what were the ramifications of not having them at all? So why would we not allow something to be built if we even on a, if we had a reduced fee?
Oh. They could, the projects could, if we don't, a good question. If we don't adopt a storm drainage SDC fee, say we, you know, that, that doesn't have support. Those projects would still need to be built. They would just have to be funded another way, so.
Cause that's what's been happening all along.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So I'd like to know, I have not seen a list of those projects in a while. So it's been a while since we took a look at that. This, I know that, but I'm having a chance to dive into each one of them. If we did option two, how long would it take you to come back with a list of projects that?
Relatively quickly. We, we'd need to meet as, as in staff internally and, and look at, at, you know. We had the project listed as priority projects, high priority and low priority. So we would need to, you know, say, for example, we decided to not fund all the low priority projects. I kind of went through that calculation. And the, it would reduce the SDC charge by about roughly half. But, but then.
The project still need to get done.
But the project still need to get done at some point, so. But yeah, a good question is the, the project list is in the, the council packet in the, in the storm drainage methodology. But, but right, it's just a big list. It doesn't.
But doesn't help us.
Yeah, yeah.
So what you need from us is if we want to move forward with option one or option two?
Yeah.
Can't make a total decision, but I'm leaning towards option one.
And as am I, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, so my thinking is if we don't, if we go with option two, while we, you know, even though we're going to pass this. It's not like we're getting all this money right at once, you know, it's, it's going to come in as development happens. And in the meantime, some of these low priority projects could potentially become high priority. And if we decide, oh, we're just going to ignore those, those, those can jump to the top of our list pretty quick, I think. So I am, I am inclined to go with option one as well.
Turned myself off. Yeah, I, for those same reasons, for those same reasons, I, I kind of makes sense to me. And especially you've been very clear that it's new development or redevelopment, not anything retroactive on ratepayers. So I can support that.
Counselor McGee.
I echo what Counselor Novak stated, that it's not going to be retroactive. That was my biggest concern.
Yeah, so bring forth option one, please.
And the last thing to consider is phasing in the fee. We can, you know, pass the resolutions necessary and have it have implemented. Like January one or, or June, you know, all, all at once. Or we could phase in that fee incrementally in like two years, three years, four years. You could, you're just kind of make that decision as well. I think with the.
That's what we do with the other ones, right?
With, yeah, with waters, with wastewater and water, the recent updates, more recent, two thousand nineteen. Those were phased in over.
Five years?
Five, I think, yeah.
But are you, are we comfortable with the phase in project process?
What is the impact of that? I mean, does that just mean some of these projects will be delayed?
Phasing in, receiving the revenue for these projects is a long term.
Yeah.
Have a long term investment, so, so. Delay, implementing it over a five year period, you're not, you're going to miss a little bit of revenue. But not a lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think phasing it in also gives developers planning, time to plan out their projects based on those numbers.
An incentive to get their stuff done.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, council, we comfortable phasing it in?
I am.
I am.
So, yeah, thank you very much, Counselor McGee. Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it?
Uh, one more slide. So we have a public hearing. We, we kind of sent the notices out anticipating, hopefully moving forward. So we did that. So we have a public hearing scheduled for November eighth. So at that point, we'll bring, bring back. Two resolutions, one, this, this, this is, I mean, there's support for the fee, so that's good. But keep in mind that there'll be two, two, there'll be probably one public hearing, but two decision points. One, where we adopt the methodology. And that methodology will have that well sixteen hundred and fifty-one dollars per an average single family home. You'll, that'll be adopted. The methodology, though, that does not set the fee. So you'll adopt, you'll pass a resolution to adopt the methodology. And then a separate resolution to adopt the fee and they'll have the phase in schedule and all that. So there'll be two, two separate actions there on, on the eighth.
And thank you.
All right.
We did, we did the same thing with the other stuff, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next, are you done? You're done?
Yep, yep.
Next on tonight's agenda is street funding discussion with State Engineer Station Mount Castro. Page twenty-three to thirty-three in their packet. Oh, you're not Stacy. She must have left. You've done something with your hair. Derluski.
Claskic.
Another presentation?
Yep. First.
Yeah.
All righty. Good afternoon. I just need to share my screen here. There we go. I'm in business, so again, good evening, everybody. Here before you today to talk about. Transportation. Of funding indirectly, but right now we're talking about just kind of pavement condition one oh one. First of all. Maybe at the beginning here, just kind of define some terms used throughout this document. There are many different ways to design and build streets, but they all include the same elements. You have a pavement on the surface there, which is either asphalt or concrete. And then underneath that, you have a layer of crushed rock, which is placed over the existing underlying soil. Overall, the city is responsible for the repair and maintenance of about one hundred and ninety miles of streets. Which if you look at it another way, that's four hundred and one lane miles of roads. Cause some roads have more lanes than others, so. And most of our streets, the vast majority are asphalt surfaced. We have a small percentage of streets that are concrete. Probably the, the biggest ones that you may see out there are portions of Marion Street. And then also the Southern end of Waverly Drive and Columbus are concrete as well. But again, the vast majority of our streets are asphalt. Streets are classified in one of three categories of arterial collector and local streets. The street classifications are important for various reasons. But one of those reasons is many of the state and federal funding options. That we have for street maintenance are restricted based upon the street classification. And the actual details of that funding will be discussed in the future. Just kind of go over some of these here. Arterial streets are major transportation corridors that have high traffic volumes and they carry the majority of traffic. Entering, leaving and moving across the cities. This includes roads such as Waverly Drive and Queen Avenue. A picture here of Waverly Drive. Collector streets serve the role of gathering and channeling traffic from arterials to neighborhood streets. Picture here is Marion Street and Jackson Street would be another example of that. And local streets are neighborhood streets that have lower traffic volumes compared to arterial and collector streets. They provide direct access to adjacent properties and are not intended to be used for long distance through movements. Uh, they provide direct access to adjacent properties and are not intended to be used for long distance through movements. Here we have a picture of our street classification map. So you can see kind of where the arterials and collectors are and all those green lines there are local streets, which are most of the map. Uh, kind of just a summary of our different classified roads out there. Uh, we have twenty-one miles of arterial streets. It's generally two to five lanes, looking at twenty-five to forty, to forty-five miles an hour. Generally don't have parking, but there's exceptions to every rule. Usually looking at bike lanes, sidewalks and traffic between five and twenty-five thousand vehicles per day. Collectors, we have slightly more collector streets than arterials at twenty-five miles, generally two to three lanes, twenty-five to forty-five mile per hour speed limit. More likely to have parking, but not always. Again, bike lanes and sidewalks and you're looking at fifteen hundred to twelve thousand vehicles per day. And the most of our streets, a hundred and forty-three miles is, uh, our local streets. Two lane streets, twenty-five miles an hour, generally parking. Uh, don't normally have bike lanes because there's not a lot of traffic on those roads. Sidewalks, hopefully not always, but the standard is to have sidewalks. And generally traffic is under twenty-five hundred vehicles per day. Uh, payment management, but the idea of payment management is a means of evaluating pavements for defects. Recommending methods to rehabilitate the pavement and prioritize prioritizing rehabilitation work according to the seriousness of the defects and the most cost effective strategy to maintain the city's street network to the desired level of service. Uh, generally you look at a, you know, these kind of four general things that you're trying to do, optimize your decision making, making the right investment at the right time, using the right renewal strategy. Uh, trying to get to the lowest life cycle cost to meet your desired level of service and provide transparency and accountability and kind of help to tell the story. It's a way to track things over time or the road's getting better or they're getting worse or they staying the same. Well, here we'll get into the, uh, pavement condition index. Um, the city uses the pavement condition index methodology as the primary technique to evaluate streets on a three to five year cycle. The PCI is a numerical index between zero for a completely failed street up to one hundred, which is a brand new street with the asphalt just cooled. And it's used to indicate the general condition of pavements based upon a visual inspection of the pavement surface. Results of these inspections are entered into Street Saver, which is the city's pavement management software that we use and used to assess the condition of the pavement and form investment strategies and suggest appropriate maintenance. And the Oregon Department of Transportation, uh, uses what they call the good, fair, poor classification system for pavement. So we've started to adopt that since we're required to report to the state our pavement condition in those categories. So we'll, but kind of adopted those categories as well. Generally, uh, well, I will, I'll just go through here.
Question?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So we have to report the status of our local roads to them or just the state roads?
I believe all the roads. And by classification. That's something that came out of the, uh, the transportation funding package that came out five or six years ago now. Again, I think they're trying to collect information to see if it's making a difference. That's, so that's again, a kind of an accountability or a benchmark thing to see if it's what it's accomplishing. Uh, that good category corresponds to a PCI of eighty to a hundred. Fair category is fifty to seventy-nine and poor is everything under fifty. Like here, we have an example of a good conditioned street, maybe North Albany Road near the bridge over Thornton Lakes. That upon last inspection had a PCI of ninety. Not much wrong there. Uh, example of a fair condition road, be thirty-fourth avenue near Columbus Street, currently has a PCI of about sixty-five. See that? There's some cracks in there, but not too bad. Uh, and you get into roads in the poor condition. Uh, here's an example. This is Del Rio Avenue, west of Columbus Street. This has a PCI of thirty-four. You can see it's broken up there in the middle with some other cracking happening. And then example of a really bad street, uh, this is also in poor condition, uh, thirty-eighth Avenue, west of Thurston Street. This has a PCI of four. And there isn't anything right with this road. Uh, it's, it is, it looks pretty bad. It rides really bad. Current condition of streets. Uh, one objective under goal two of the great neighborhoods theme of Albany Strategic Plan is to utilize available street funding to maintain arterial and collector streets to a minimum pavement condition index score of sixty. Uh, the strategic plan does not identify a minimum PCI goal for local streets. The average PCI of arterial streets and collector streets are both seventy-one. And the average of our local streets is fifty-nine. Yeah. Well, this table's kind of a bunch of numbers, so I've broken these out into some tables here so you can see this a little bit easier. As you can, if you want to make it well. And wait, the takeaway from this slide is that, uh, we have a lot more local streets than arterial and collector streets. And see by the, uh, number of miles of roads there.
Uh, we get those phone calls too.
Yeah. I'll go through these.
Good condition street and for locals.
Yeah. Well, I'll kind of go through these by, by classification. So arterials, uh, basically almost all of our arterials are in good or fair condition. And this is a map showing our arterial streets. That, uh, again, we just have a couple of small segments that are in poor condition. Our collector streets. Uh, again, the vast majority are in good or fair condition, a little bit more in poor condition. Those streets are throughout town, probably the biggest ones that are contributing to the, the poor condition here. Uh, or I guess the biggest single one is going to be, uh, Ferry Street between Queen and thirty-fourth with it, which is in an industrial area. It's a lot of truck traffic, so that's contributed to that condition.
Best you.
Yeah, and then Feskey Street out there, which is.
The Home Depot, right?
Yes. Yeah, the portion south of Home Depot is much older and it's in bad condition. And then our local streets here, uh, it's kind of an interesting distribution here where we have a lot of good streets. We have a smaller amount of fair streets and then we have almost as many poor streets as we have good streets. And if you go to this map here, if you can look out throughout the city, uh, basically the streets that are in good condition are from new development over the past twenty or thirty years. And so you can see those on the periphery of town. We'll see big chunks of green. And so basically what's happened here is, uh, we're really what you're seeing is that we're, we're not taking streets that are bad and making them good. We're just adding new good streets. Which is why if you go back here and you, if you take an average of this number, it might give you a misleading number where you're like, oh, well, the average is fair, but it's not. You really have good and bad. Um, getting into types of pavement failure that, that we see out there, and these are the different types that are, uh, evaluated in that pavement condition index visual inspection. Uh, it's kind of going around here. We have alligator cracking, where you see that that complete cracking pattern, close that cracking pattern there. That's always really bad. Um, and you have longitudinal cracking, which are cracks that go in the direction of travel. Goodbye, the, the, these pictures on here are all pretty extreme examples, so you can tell what we're looking at. So just they're, they're bearing degrees of all of these.
Albany streets.
Uh, no, these are, these are from, like I said, these are shown as extreme examples so that you can kind of see them. Uh, transfers.
I say alligator, yeah, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Find your pavement that looks like that.
As far as I know, we don't have any actual alligators in town, but I at least haven't seen one. Um, transverse cracking is cracking that goes from one side of the road to the other. Uh, ravelling, this picture of ravelling, uh, also includes a lot of alligator cracking. But ravelling is where the actual surface starts to wear away. Usually you'll end up with a lot of loose rock on the road. Uh, rutting, this is horrible rutting and we don't think we have any rutting in, anywhere near this bad, but, um, and potholes, that's where you have like individual, usually where the alligator cracking starts to fall apart or you get a pothole. And then surface distortion is kind of a catchall for weird stuff that doesn't have a specific cause, but is, is still a problem. Um, basically in our toolbox of pavement rehabilitation options, we have several things that we do based upon the condition of the road that we're trying to rehabilitate. Um, at, kind of going from the cheapest to most expensive, if roads are still in good condition, if they're still in that ADPSI plus. Uh, generally we're crack sealing those roads. That's about a dollar, dollar fifty per linear foot of crack. That doesn't cost too much in the big scheme of things. Uh, slurry seal, we've reintroduced a slurry seal program in the past couple of years after not doing that. Um, generally that's the most effective when you do that on streets that are in good condition still. That costs four to five dollars per square yard. Again, that's square yard, not per square foot or per linear foot, and that's for square yard pavement area. Uh, when you get down into the fair category, uh, you're looking at a chip seal. Usually chip seals are done, they're similar to a slurry seal in price, but it's usually something that we do on, on the roads without curb and gutter. Kind of as an interim measure, uh, again, four to five dollars per square yard. Um.
Could you define slurry and chip? What's the difference?
Sure. So a, a chip seal, I'm sorry, a slurry seal is a, uh, layer that's placed upon the top that's made up of sand and asphalt that's mixed with water, some chemicals to emulsify it in there. And then when the water dries out, it deposits onto the sand that adheres to the surface. It covers the surface, gives a new, make, you know, restores that surface if there was any ravelling starting to occur, it covers that up. So it doesn't ravel anymore. Um. I'll have some pictures of these here too. The, uh, chip seal is where you come through and you spray hot liquid asphalt on the pavement or in emulsified asphalt, like on the pavement, and then you distribute like a coarse sand on top of it and then roll that. Usually you see chip seals on county roads and rural areas, uh, their surface is rougher. And so generally they're different than what you expect in a, in town. Uh, you'll definitely notice that. Uh, but it's something cheap you can do on something, you know, like an unimproved street, it's something it on those kind of roads, it will tend to last a little bit longer than, than you might think it would. Um, the next thing we do on a fair street would be a grind and overlay where we're actually removing the top two inches or three inches of the existing asphalt and then paving it back. Uh, that jumps you up to sixty to seventy dollars per square yard. That gives you a new asphalt surface again. Uh, once you drop down into that poor category, uh, your options are limited. Uh, something we've done in the past is a process called full depth reclamation with cement. That's where we're pulverizing the, the pavement uh, with a specialized machine that basically grinds up the existing asphalt, the underlying base rock and some of the soil underneath. And then you mix that with cement and water and make that into a, a hard base and then you pave over the top of that. Uh, that process used to be significantly cheaper than doing a reconstruction and the price of cement has gone up a lot in the last five or ten years. And so that isn't as much of a cost savings. Uh, it's basically the same price as doing a total reconstruction or traditional reconstruction where we're digging out and physically removing the entire pavement down to the underlying soil and rebuilding all of those layers back. That you're looking at three hundred to five hundred dollars per square yard.
That cost doesn't include checking the pipes and all that down there as well.
That's correct. That doesn't include underlying utilities like water, sewer and storm.
Does that include the curb ADA ramp, all the sidewalk, all of that?
Yes.
That, that price per square yard includes the entire street.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's usually because roads that are in that poor of condition, usually also the curbs and the sidewalks are also in really poor condition, just because the roads are really old. Um, and I'll go back up. That's a good point. On the grind and overlay option, uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires that we replace all the curb ramps when we do a, an overlay of any kind. And so that's included in that, that price as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so same thing with a reconstruction. So you could realize cost savings, for instance, on a particular project where, yeah, maybe the curbs and the sidewalks are in good shape still and just the pavements beat up. We would still have to replace the curb ramps, but we may not have to replace all the curb and gutter sidewalk. Uh, all that other stuff.
And then my other question is, is, so we have some street equipment. What are we, what, out of, on this list, what are we capable of doing in-house like here?
Uh, in-house, I know our street crews, they do the crack sealing. Uh, they have a crew that does that in the summertime. They can do some limited amount of uh, paving, so they could do some, they do have a, uh, a smaller grinding machine. It's a different kind of grinding machine. And you'd use on a larger project, but they have the ability to do s- small areas of, of that grind and overlay. But generally they're, at this point, we're limited by
But we.
Type of equipment or the, the size of the equipment and the, and the amount of manpower that are, you know, personnel that our street crew have.
So, yeah, we mostly just use it for like potholes, right?
Yeah, and they, and they can do pavement repairs and they've done some like one block segments of like a grind in lay.
But we can do a slurry seal or a chip seal, correct?
That's correct. Usually chip seals, we contract out with, uh, one of the counties, uh, usually Lynn County or Benton County. That we can piggyback on their contract where they have a lot of the equipment and they can do that with their own crews, because they do a lot of their roads that way.
But didn't we authorize the purchase of the, um, favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a, we have a small paving machine now.
Thank you.
Go through some of these examples here as those crack sealing, that's where they literally seal the cracks with asphalt, which.
Those are the ones you see in the morning when the sun's coming up with like snakes across the street.
Yes.
Good.
And I mean, oh, sure.
I'm sorry, just how long does the, this crack seal last? Is it, does it last longer? Or is this like kind of a temporary fix and are you seeing, doing this type of crack seal repair like more often than not? Versus just doing a seal, the slurry seal?
Yeah, so it's, it's, they're more like complementary to each other. Um. I would, just my guess, not knowing, you know, what our actual practice is from our street crew, I'm guessing that sealing the cracks, you probably do like every ten years or so, fifteen years. Uh, the main thing there that they do is they, they don't make the cracks go away, but they fill most of them in. They reduce the amount of water that gets under the road, immediately under the road, which makes them start to break up faster. Uh, usually what we do when we do our slurry seals is the year we identify the area we're gonna do. And the year before our street crews go out and crack seal it. And then we slurry seal over the, the crack seal the following year.
Chris, can I just say one thing too? I'm on your left.
Oh, there you go.
Um, the other thing I'll say, Counselor McGee, is that, um, when we're crack sealing a road that's not gonna get slurried, uh, we're, we're, we'll often revisit that road every year. And so next summer we'll do the new cracks that have appeared and then, and then the next summer, the, the new, new cracks that have appeared. So one road might get cracked sealed multiple years in a row until it can actually finally get repaired or it, it no longer works. But the individual crack seal lasts for many years, but we might be out there hitting more cracks year after year after year.
So to me, it, it sounds like the crack seal is like a Band-Aid approach. Am I understanding that correctly?
Um, a little, I, I wouldn't say it's a Band-Aid. It's, it's something that it slows down the deterioration of the pavement.
Oh, it's not preventative. It's sort of.
It, it is, well, he's a, I guess it is preventative. It's, you know, it's kind of reactionary, but it is, it does slow it down.
Yeah, it's, it's preventing that crack from continuing to spread and grow. And so what happens with the crack is then you get water in the wintertime in the crack and then it'll freeze and then thaw. And then you'll get more water and it'll just grow and grow and grow. If you can get the crack sealed before the water can hit it, then you can help protect the base that's underneath all of that. So it is preventative, but it's, it's sort of like wrinkles, like you can put your moisturizer on and you might, you know, slow the. And you might, you know, slow the pace of your wrinkles, but the road is still gonna crack.
Yeah, use another. I got no, I gotta use another. No, I'm joking. Okay, thank you.
And therein lies the rub. Okay.
Pushed a bunch of buttons I didn't intend to, so here we go. Uh, there's a picture what slurry seal. Looks like it comes out of the back. The story seal is a specialized machine. Uh, where it's mixing all those ingredients and it. Puts them out the back there. Like comes out looking like. Chocolate milk and then it turns black after a while. Uh, chip seal, this is what you see that chip seal spreader. That that rock spreader, that's a specialized piece of machine. I mean, or either our contractors that do that, but like I said, the local counties. Have equipment to do that that they do in-house. And when we've wanted to do that on roads, we contracted with them because we get a better price, so. Uh, grind and overlay is where we grind off the top and pave it back and see what that looks like. And on the left there, that's what. That's the pulverizing machine I talked about there for full depth reclamation with cement that. The very big, heavy specialized machine that comes in and that. Brings everything up and then you. Mix cement in there and grind it back up again and recompact it to. Create a base. Then reconstruction there on the right, that's a picture from Hill Street a few years ago when we were redoing that. Uh, it's very disruptive, very expensive. They say you're removing a lot of material, putting a lot of materials back. Spending a lot of time and energy putting those materials back so they stay that. Here's the economics of pavement renovation. So. Uh, the short answer here is that uh, pavements deteriorate slowly and then quickly. Uh, which is why sometimes it can be kind of misleading what's what's happening with streets because you'll see the road where. Seems fine. And then a couple of years later, it seems suddenly much worse. Generally, what you see on this. That after seventy-five percent of the time of a pavement's life, it drops forty percent in quality. And then you get another forty percent quality drop and only another. Seventeen percent of its lifespan. Though it's kind of suddenly drops off a cliff and that's. That's why it's kind of misleading. Uh, sometimes when you look at roads and you're like, well, why did it suddenly deteriorate so quickly? And the answer is because that's what roads do, apparently. So if you can catch roads when you're at, if you can do. Some sort of maintenance treatment when. Before it starts down that steep part of the curve, you can do something that. You know, if you, every dollar you spend there. Saves you four to five dollars you spend if you just waited a couple more years. And here's kind of how. Taking those charts and seeing how that would look over time. Those black lines there, if you can see them, that would be. If you just let it run down the curve to pour and then reconstruct it. And you see, yep, you go right back up to the top, but. That's really expensive. You know, that's in that. Three hundred and fifty to five hundred and five per square yard category. Whereas those blue lines there is if you. Kind of wait for it to deteriorate a little bit before it gets. Seemingly isn't very bad at all. Yeah, and you seal the cracks and then you. Come back a couple more years and then, you know, you do a grind and overlay on it. And that bumps you back up. And then, you know, after a few more years, you come and you do that again and then. Do that again over time and. Those grind and overlays are much cheaper than waiting for it to completely fail and reconstruct again. Well, that's kind of where, you know, that's the optimum strategy for roads. Um, part of the trick is you have, once they get down into that poor category, you can't do that anymore. Which is really the. I guess that is also the detail in the white paper that was attached to the council memo that. The best financial strategy is to spend your road maintenance dollars on your good roads to keep them good. Problem is that, you know. You have the roads that are bad and if you tackle the worst roads first exclusively. It costs a lot of, you'd have to fund that at that level. And meanwhile, you're not, you're, all these other roads are slowly deteriorating into that poor category and you can't catch up. That's the general overview here. Uh, we're here. At the ninth, uh, we're gonna come back at the November sixth work session. To talk about. Kind of the overview of funding for these things. Probably be a. Much more. Difficult discussion. So we discuss of the the scope of the problem. And then we'll come back, uh, assuming that stays on track there, looking at different funding alternatives. Uh, in December.
Thank you.
And at this point, do we have any other questions on? Payment condition.
Yes. So I caught this presentation at the tack and I thought it was fascinating, Dan, and I'm I'm, you know, every time I. I see it, I get something new out of it. So thank you. Can you? Uh, send these slides out to us, too? I think this is helpful.
Yeah.
As we start conversations with constituents, um, it's nice to have. The charts and, you know, all of that. Yeah, the other thing I'll mention is. As some of you know, we've, this is probably all deja vu for a few of you. Um, we did this in around two thousand eighteen. Very similar approach, very similar discussion that. Um, and we built at that time a robust website. Which I know Counselor Kupinski has referred people to. We're updating that website with. New numbers, the the concept is the same. Uh, as far as um, the optimal investment in pavement and and why you might. Wonder why we're gonna go and do an overlay on thirty-four. Or, uh, you know, or whatever the next strategy is, when thirty-four still rides just fine. Um, you know, why we are investing in roads that appear to be okay. Is because they're about to fall off that curve. And so that's a, that curve is very important. You'll see that come up again and again. And um, the website has. All of this information, the things that have changed are. Mostly the number of miles and the the PCI numbers. For the road. Interestingly, I think the last time we did this, our average PCI for arterios and collectors was worse. Than it is now. Um, and I think Hill Street was one of the big reasons why, and we've gotten Hill Street done since then, so. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that, but it, there's also information on the web is my very long point. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I think you're done. Sorry, appreciate you. I'd like to take a five-minute bio break. I'll be back at. Uh, twenty-five or seven minute.
Okay. Oh, okay.
You look at it, it's like a circle.
Counselor, one minute. Counselor, one minute. Counselor Newton. This should be short. Since we're all back in our seats, let's go ahead and get started. Next on tonight's agenda is license to occupy Oak Street. Right away, Stacy Bell Castro, page thirty-four to thirty-eight in her packet. And hi, Stacy.
Hello. So, um. This item discusses a request that we received from Mister. What is his name? Mister Brockman. Um, he's developing a property on the corner of Oak and Ninth Avenue. And has requested a to um, occupy a small portion of the right away. Um, that requires that council approve a license to occupy occupy public right away. Um, exhibit. Or attachment A that's on page thirty-five, it shows um, Mister Brockman's property at twelve zero seven Ninth Avenue. Um, also, um, coincidentally, council um. Approved a sale of a property along Oak Street to Mister Brockman back in July twenty twenty-one, you may remember. And then that small portion which he would like to occupy is shown at seventy square feet. Um, he's going to extend the paving along his Oak Street frontage. Is what his plan is. And so staff is recommending that council approve this license. And it will be on the consent calendar for Wendy Wednesday's council meeting. Um, but I could answer any questions today if anybody has any.
Is this gonna be a driveway? Is that? The intent?
Um, he's, he's, he, no, I think what he wants to do is he has like recycling or garbage bins that he, he's extending the pavement along his. Oak, the Oak Street um, frontage and then that area will be paved and that that's where he would put the garbage bins.
Okay.
Anybody else? Make it so. We'll see you Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, business from the council. And I'll start with Dr. McGee. She's online.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go, uh, word two. Counselor, Counselor Kupinski.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Newton.
I have nothing tonight as well.
Counselor Smith.
I have something. I took advantage of a suggestion. To attend a training put on by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission on uh, executive sessions. It was excellent and it's online. It's on their website. I would recommend it to anybody. The trainer was particularly engaging. Um, spoke simple language. Uh, gave us all opportunities to review the material and. Uh, respond to a uh, multiple choice uh, test twice. I got two answers wrong, partially wrong, not completely wrong. The first time I got them all correct the second time. It it's really, really good training. It was, it was short. It was like forty minutes, forty-five minutes. And um, they, the Ethics Commission has taken over. Authority for um, enforcement of the public meetings law. Um, along with. I think it's finance, help me out here, Sean, if you can. They're they're, they, well, ethics complaints in general, but. But they're now um, monitoring and enforcing the public meetings law and. They are, uh, it's just really good training. So. If you have forty spare minutes, it will be well worth your time. There are other trainings they're gonna be offering over time and um. I think I'll just sign up for as many of them as I can because they're really good.
Marilyn, was that online?
It is.
Website?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, they they have a a good manual on executive sessions on there as well.
They do.
So models and stuff, so that's good. Thank you.
Excellent. Um, Counselor, you.
I have nothing.
Counselor Novak.
I will probably wait till Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay. I'm the same way. I've been so busy with work that I haven't had a chance to, other than read the agenda. and the packet. I've been just stressing about Medicare all the time. So um, with that, I will pass the city manager report.
City manager's back tomorrow. Thank goodness.
Oh, that's
Nothing to note.
Okay.
Thankfully.
The city council will now meet in the in the executive session to consider matters relating to the safety of the governing body, public body staff, volunteers and body, public body facilities in accordance with ORS one nine two dot six six zero, that's subsection two, subsection zero, oh. Uh, representative of the news media or designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend executive session. All other parties must exit. Online's audience, online audience members, we move into a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to to open session, the staff will open the door and invite you can rejoin the meeting, rejoin the meeting, excuse me. Representative of news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations on the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions we made executive session. I now recess to executive session at five thirty-one PM. Session time is six twelve PM. You can let folks back in. There's no one waiting. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at six twelve PM. Thank you all.